Twenty twenty-two meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. As we always do, we'll take a moment of reflection. And certainly, I hope you'll keep the people in the eyes of the hurricane in your thoughts and places that it's already been, places that it's coming. So we'll take a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge. Thank you. Could you please join me for the pledge led by councilman, councilperson?
I pledge allegiance to our United States of America and to its republic, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have two adjustments to the agenda. The first being to the consent agenda would be a resolution recognizing October the ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, as Fire Prevention Week. And under discussion and action by mayor and council, a request for street closure for the fire department parade on October the fourth, twenty twenty-two, from five to ten, on Main Street, from Park Street northeast to Radford Street northwest, Radford Street northwest, from West Main Street to Depot Street, Depot Street northwest to Radford Street northwest, to Radford Street northwest to the fire department, and Run Oak Street from East Main Street to First Street. You've got an awful lot of First Streets and Whonevers in here. Do I have a motion to accept that?
To move.
Got a motion in a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Cho?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Six oh, thank you very much. Public hearings, we have, I believe, two tonight. We have a zoning request by Marjorie Ann Rudy, property owner and RWW thirty-four LLC contract purchaser to reorganize a property located at twelve hundred Buffalo Drive Northwest, tax parcel five-five-six-eight-eighty-four. Parcel ID number is one-one-one-zero-two-eight. It's four point nine oh-one acres from A Agriculture District to B-three General Business to R-three Multiple Family Residential District with profit conditions in order to allow forty-nine townhouse units. Property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the twenty thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this? You know the drill, Steve.
Yes, sir. Let me grab the pointer. Next one over, Andrew. We're on the far right. All right, thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of council. Steve Simonez with Balzer and Associates, eighty College Street. As the mayor mentioned, we're here tonight to look at and request a rezoning for four point nine acres owned by Ms. Rudy with a contract purchaser of RWW thirty-four. Going to go through some slides here with you. The site we're looking at right here, this is the four point nine acres. For reference, there's Christiansburg Middle School, Victory Restoration Church, the town's water tank, the Kensington subdivision is just off screen here, Moose Drive, Buffalo, College, West Main. So the current zoning on the property, as the mayor mentioned, is agricultural and B-three. If some of you all that were on council several years and years ago, when the Kensington property was rezoned, this portion of the Harkrader Farm was also zoned agriculture. So this is one of the parcels in town, within town limits, that still has that agricultural zoning on it. You can see the zoning line, which is right here. So all of this is agriculture, and there's a little sliver along Moose that is currently the B-three zoning. What we're asking for tonight is a rezoning to R-three, a straight R-three rezoning to allow townhome uses on this. The proposed density we're looking at is forty-nine homes, which is what's allowed in the R-three, which is basically ten units per acre. I'm going to jump forward here. This is the existing, again, the existing parcel right here. There are two houses sitting on the property right now and a couple of outbuildings. We'll look at this entrance here in just a second. This is the existing driveway, which is across from the rear access into the Harkrader Sports Complex. So the property, here's a general layout of the property itself. Again, forty-nine townhome units. We'd have one access point that you'll see here on another blow-up here in just a second that will enter into the property off of Buffalo Drive, come in, be able to loop around and service the forty-nine townhome units you see right here. We have several areas of open space in the property. Water and sewer would be extended through as well. This would be a private drive. This isn't a public street that would be coming through, so this is a private drive that would be built and designed up to town standards per the zoning ordinance. This is just a little blow-up of the area itself. One of the items that came up in planning commission was having a little bit of extra parking. So what we had showed initially was driveways and parking spaces per town code for each of the townhome units themselves. Planning Commission wanted to be sure that with townhomes, even though this is market rate, you know, this isn't a student housing project, obviously, in Blacksburg, but to have guest parking and some overflow parking as well. So prior to our planning commission vote last week, we had added in eighteen parking spaces on this side of the drive aisle that could be used for overflow and guest parking. You'll see we have some crosswalks shown, sidewalk access that would get you out to Buffalo. I'll jump back real quick. We would also have sidewalk that would be installed along this section of Moose as well. When Good Samaritan Hospice went in, there were some infrastructure improvements done along Moose there. So this would wrap around the corner and be able to cross and then get back up into the site itself. So that's an overview of the property, obviously, with the aerial. So you see the existing driveway we talked about. So we're proposing to have our entrance across from any of us that have kids at the middle school, you know, the bus loop. So the buses come in here, do that loop. You pick your kids up for after-school activities there as well. We felt that this was, you know, in the mornings, you do have bus traffic coming in, but you get a lot of backups here at this intersection with people coming in, with car riders drop off and pickup in the afternoon. We did not, because of the distance to the intersection here at Buffalo and Moose, we did not propose to put an access point right there, again, because of those traffic, those kind of traffic backups in the morning and the afternoon. So we thought the safest and most logical place to put it would be up at Buffalo here. As you all know, once you get up to this point right here, Buffalo, the extension as it goes up is a gravel road. So no improvements are planned for that, as our access would stop right here. We would improve that section of Buffalo up to a full town standard as required by engineering. So if we have to dedicate right-of-way on our side of the road or add curb and gutter, widen the road in that section, that would be part of this development plans as well. The homes themselves, I'm going to jump a little bit. The homes themselves, there would be three different unit types that would be, that are proposed on it. All are three-bedroom. Some have a three-and-a-half bath, the unit, two of them, or some of them have two baths. Different square footages. There's an eighteen-foot, three-story unit. That's the one you're looking at right here, eighteen-foot wide, I'm sorry, eighteen-foot wide, three-story unit. So again, dining and living on the main floor with a kitchen, after, or master bedroom and study on the second floor, and up at the third floor, you'd have another two bedrooms. That works out to be a little over two thousand square feet. You've got a twenty-four-foot wide unit. So again, you've got an office and a study on the ground floor here with your living room, kitchen and dining, and then three bedrooms on the second floor. Those are two-story units. Those work out to be about eighteen hundred and thirty square feet. And then you've got the thirty-foot unit that's wider end units. That's another, that's a three-bed, two-bath. You have a bedroom on the main level there, so a master on the main, full bath on the main level as well, and then two bedrooms upstairs with a bath. That one works out to be about eight hundred and eighty-seven square feet. These lots, as shown, can be subdivided for sale, or they could be rented. Couple of the other items that we talked about at planning commission, we talked about access through the site. There will be an HOA or a management company that will take care of the stormwater management areas, the parking lot, you know, plow the street in this area right here of the road, keep up with all the exterior maintenance of the units and the grounds itself. Stormwater, I'm going to back up a little bit here. Sorry, mayor, I'm jumping around here, but I want to touch on everything. Obviously, town council knows the study that's going on right now with College Street and the overall drainage improvements. As you all know, back a year and a half or so ago, we were in front of you for another developer to rezone that piece of property there on College Street. We got involved in having some discussions with the town concerning the stormwater management plan for this, and I know the study's underway and the design's underway at this point. This property itself would not be, from my conversations with Mike Kelly, the town, with any of the drainage improvement plans, is not planning to account for a future development on this site. Sorry if I did that, Andrew. So we would have our own stormwater management facility on this site itself. The site kind of pulls down this way, flows down this direction towards Buffalo, so we would end up with a stormwater management area down in part of our open space we have shown right here. That would then tie out to the current infrastructure that's in Moose and Buffalo and College and continue on down the watershed. But we would be working with the town engineering department to be sure anything we did up here would not negatively impact further down College in the overall drainage study that the town is working on. So with our open space, we've got about twenty-five percent of open space right now. So ideas would be, you know, some dog park areas, some playground areas, and then just passive open space in the areas where we'd have our stormwater management. We talked about our one access point. Landscaping, we would be required by town code to landscape and have enough tree cover and canopy coverage. This is just a rendering we put together showing, obviously, the landscaping we'd have in the parking lot, around the perimeter is necessary. One thing I did want to point out, we do have two possibilities, this one being the main one. This section of Kensington is not rezoned at this point, no development is planned. We are going to keep this open, that if the potential for a cross-access in this area, for emergency access, either for this property or for this property when it develops, you'd be able to have that there, so there would be another way out. You can see this road, when Good Samaritan Hospice was built, this road and a section of property in here was dedicated and built out to accommodate a full town right-of-way. So that road, in theory, would make its way out and tie into Bishopsgate Road in the future, which is kind of the steep, curvy road that goes up to the top of Kensington itself. Lastly, we did obviously look at the comprehensive plan, as the mayor mentioned in the intro. This is residential and the town's future land use map. We feel this is a good location for residential housing. We obviously have townhomes directly across the street from us. We do have townhomes back in Kensington that are being developed right now, but have some affordable, you know, product type for sale or for rent that's walkable and accessible to the middle school. Planning Commission felt it was a really good location for it in general, so we'd be looking for your all's favorable support on the rezoning request. We do have three proppers, one that'd be in substantial conformance with our concept plan, that it would only be used for townhouse and residential use only, and that we would have no more than three-bedroom units on here, so we couldn't come in after we get approval and put four-bedroom units or five-bedroom units here. And I think that's it, mayor. I'd be happy to answer any questions if council has any right now.
Steve, I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
So it's going to be operated with a homeowners' association. So will the homeowners' association be responsible for collecting the trash and garbage, or is that going to be up to us?
I don't know if we're at that point yet. I mean, it could go either private collection with cans, or it could go with the town. We've worked that out with Public Works, however, the town would prefer to see it.
I just know that other properties that are condensally built in townhomes and things, I mean, it's a real rat's nest to get in there to get the trash up. And the other question concerns the accessibility, not only of our fire trucks, or our trash trucks, but our fire trucks. And have you run this, has this been run by the fire department to see what the widths are going to be, if it will accommodate a fire truck to get all the way back to the back?
It will, yes, sir. I'd have to defer to staff if Chief Hanks was brought in on this, but, so when we worked on other projects, fire department has said we need at least twenty feet of clear area to operate our trucks to get in and get out. By town code for a townhouse development, your streets have to be thirty feet of unobstructed width. So all the paved areas you see here that are outside of our parking spaces are thirty feet. So we have actually run a truck, you know, in our computer model, we've actually run a trash truck and a fire truck through the property itself to be sure they can make the turns, back up, get out. So we have looked at that from our standpoint.
Okay.
I guess with, along with Michael Barber, was saying, I had the same concerns as well as the trashcans. I know when this went to public, the public planning commission, it was mentioned about the trashcans, but there was nothing really in place as far as like, where are you going to put the trashcans? Can you tell me exactly where you're going to put them? Are you going to be able to put them out and put them back in, and is there a place for them to go? Because I don't see anything in here.
So typically, unless we were doing a dumpster, we wouldn't show the individual locations for cans unless you were doing a big overall corral.
They're going to be stored behind the units?
They would likely be stored. Each one of these units would have a storage door, and Jim can speak to this as well. Basically, from the front, they have a storage door that comes off of the front porch where you can store your cans inside the building itself and then pull them out on trash day.
They're going to be part of the requirement from the homeowners' association?
Yeah, that's what we talked about at planning commission, that, you know, if people are leaving cans out. That would be, right, that would be an HOA, and I'm not sure, I think somebody had brought up whether that's actually in the town code or not from a zoning violation perspective. But it would be an HOA responsibility to make sure people are bringing their cans in.
So Simonez, can you show me exactly where they will go once trash collection happens? Like, for example, Wednesday, whatever day it is, on these drawings?
Where they would go when they're coming to pick up trash?
Yeah.
So you've got areas on this side, you've got areas down the, down the little island here. So I know some of the times what they'll do, depending upon, you know, how many parking spaces they're being used at the time, you can bring them out into these areas just outside of the drive aisles. So one of the things we talked about at planning commission too would be, do you carve off some areas within these islands to give the trash truck a central location to pick up some of these as well? So the other option we talked about was if it just went, not with the town, but if it went with private collection, you know, if there was a private company that was contracted to take the trash.
I know they have private contractors in some other areas, I think the Villas, I believe, is private.
Now, I guess with the stormwater, I'm so glad you're picking this out, but I'm really, obviously, you have been involved with the whole thing with College Street. It is an issue right now, you know, and it has been talks in the past that any other thing or whatever wouldn't affect it, but it has affected what it is going on right now with, you know, some past decisions that were made. But right now, going forward, you know, I know that you're saying to us that this will not affect that, but that water will still eventually find its way down College Street.
Yes, mayor.
Can you somehow make us a promise this is not going to make it any worse, it's going to help even?
So what we've done, let me, I'm going to back up to another screen. So one of the ideas that we talked about with engineering when we were looking at this property was actually over-detaining the stormwater management above and beyond what the minimum state code is. So if we normally would detain for a ten-year storm, we would have, we had conversations about detaining for a twenty-five-year storm, so holding a bigger storm. We've got the area down in our, in our open space area here, that if that's what the engineering director from the studies with the third-party consultants that the town is using, if that's the direction we need to go, we can make the accommodations within the stormwater facility itself. But we will design this facility to the specifications that the town engineering department thinks we should, based on those downstream concerns.
Can you please, Randy and Benjamin and you guys? And one more thing that I was going to ask Randy is that road, this is not for you, but it's mostly for Randy, that road that connects the Buffalo Road, do we have anything in, you know, in the plans right now to even pave that in the near future?
We don't. There is a portion of it through here that would, you know, that is part of the property. Beyond that, where we, for our public portion of the department has access to the water, can it still be done?
Question, Randy, with that being a private drive, would our ordinance with not keeping the trashcans out in front of your house, would that apply?
Oh, honestly, I'd want to take a look in the code, the verbiage. I do think it's worded that it be out of sight of public streets, and we allow it within three feet of the front facade, other than being within three feet of the front facade or behind the building, the main facade, basically.
From a public street, though.
I believe it is public street.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, Steve, you actually stated on here that they, in the minutes from the planning commission, Mr. Simonez stated that they would have their own trashcans.
Right.
Have you guys adjusted that, or are you guys still thinking?
No, no, we would have our own trashcans. It's planned to have our own trashcans, it's just whether it's picked up by the town or it's picked up as a private company.
So each homeowner or renter would have their own?
That's the plan right now. Now, I'll say right now at public hearing, I mean, if council has a concern about this, we do have ability, we've got some areas we could put some dumpsters in, but with residential, especially in townhouse, we try not to, you know, especially in other residential, you know, when you've got residential, single-family around it, you know, banging trashcans or banging dumpsters, you know, early in the morning. But we've got the areas to put a dumpster in if that would be preferable to town council.
I'm not saying either way. I like the idea of having that dedicated space at the turnaround, because I agree with the mayor and Joanna, when you go to these high-density developments, those cans are all over the place. And it's hard for the trucks to get in there and get them, and it just depends who's doing it, I guess, who's dumping it. But I know in my neighborhood, it's, we have cans that have been out for weeks at this point, so.
It drives you crazy, that.
And I mean, one of the things, one of the things too is that you're saying right now that it's going to have an HOA in the near future, you know? But once you guys are done, obviously, somebody else, the homeowners, will take over and stuff. And there is the chances that they can give it back to the town, I'm sure, right? And so at that point, I, my biggest concern is like, to have what's going on like on your drive over there by Cambria, you probably know the street. I mean, half of those townhomes are like on with, without like HOA, and nobody has no rules, no, you know, whatever, but the other half do, because they made their own little HOAs. But as far as, you know, there is like, it really is kind of sad for me to go and see like all the trashcans. Like, one place looks really nice, and the last side is like, there are trashcans on there for weeks sometimes, you know, like what Cho Walter was saying. We want to make sure that the town is well-kept, and, you know, the trashcans won't blow away, and, I mean, it's two trashcans per person, you know, I mean, per unit, so.
Well, Steve, I think you need to make a decision. You said they're going to have trashcans, and whether we pick them up or somebody else is going to pick them up. If the trashcans are not the type that we use, I can guarantee you, we will not pick them up.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir. Yep.
Do you understand that portion?
Absolutely.
Very good. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the audience? I'm sorry.
Pull up the individual drawing, the first floor, one at a time. Okay? You see a thing right on the side of the front porch there where there's a trashcan showing inside the little thing? So when it's not trash pickup day, it's a place for a trashcan right out front there.
But it'd be a place for two, because they've got recycling too.
If the town does.
Yeah, if we do it.
Yeah, if you do it.
Okay.
They'll flip to the next, the twenty-four-foot wide first level. There's a trashcan thing, you know, little closet right on the front porch. We're going to be kept out of the house and stuff, but then taken out to the street on trash day. And then same thing on the thirty-foot wide. And it was an attempt to answer a problem, so you don't have it sitting on the front porch every day, all day, all along.
Okay.
Okay?
We can have the ability to have two trashcans in there. Is there any ways in the plans? Obviously, you have a window right next to the trashcan thing right there.
Right, you do need light into the rooms in the house, so that would make it a little bit more difficult. Not sure, maybe they could keep a small recycling bin. I know my daughter and her boyfriend have little recycling bin things that they keep in the house, and then they get needed.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience, any questions, comments? The next conditional use permit, real quick.
Steve, could you let us know whether in two weeks, whether you're going private or public?
We'll let you know before then, yes, sir.
Before we vote in two weeks?
Yes, sir.
We have a conditional use permit request with Lloyd Birch, Lloyd and Mary Birch, Two LLC, property owner, and Ron Frank Jr., L.C., to allow public billiard parlor and pool room on the property located at thirty-one sixty-five North Franklin Street. There are about eighteen tax parcels. I am not going to read them all, but they are consistent in numbers. And it is all be, all of that parcel is zoned B-three General Business District. Property is designated as business commercial on a future land use map of the two thousand thirteen Christiansburg Comprehensive Plan. Is there anyone here to address this issue?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it would appear the applicant is not here tonight. I spoke with them just a moment ago. They send their apologies. They mixed up the dates. They would ask that if you would be amenable to it, that the item be continued.
To do what?
That the item be continued to a future meeting. Yes, sir.
They'll have to be here for a public hearing. I don't, this is basically for the public to input.
Correct.
These developers and owners just get up because they want to fill us in, but I've always thought this was more of a public, where the public can jump in and say something about it, part of us opening our mouths. Or we could say something about it.
And if you would like to continue with that, I'd be happy to discuss the request or answer any questions you might have about it.
But they requested us to continue.
Yes, sir. I think they'd like to represent themselves if they can. Yes, sir.
So if we do that, that will be, if we forward it two more weeks, then it'd be two more weeks before the vote on it, end of October.
And then we're going to be, I'm having about one meeting in November, and then we're not going to have a meeting in November.
No, but this, if we continue this thing, we can continue it to the eleventh, and it can be voted on the twenty-fifth, two weeks.
Is there anybody here to speak on this? Sorry, I mean, in two weeks, we're going to vote, and they can come and represent themselves as well.
It's your discretion.
I'm good on voting on this to not, well, actually, not voting, leaving for a public hearing, and we can give him the opportunity to speak next time.
Well, we will, because that's when we vote.
Not sure that we will, because it will go straight into the consent agenda.
Okay.
If we do not table it.
It'd be, it'd be under action by council and mayor and council.
Yeah. It's what.
But he could, he could speak during the citizens' hearing if he wanted to.
Okay.
Because that happens right before.
All right. Any questions for Ben? Because, you know, we changed the ordinance two weeks ago, a month ago.
Yes, sir.
To actually allow this with the onset of the changes in the pool and billiards environment. It's gone from the smoky pool halls I grew up in to actually family affairs and quite reputable.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it was a pretty rough one down there. But anyway, so, I mean, I don't have a problem if you guys want to table it and let them come, or if we want to go ahead and discuss it, give them an opportunity to speak at the next meeting.
I would love for them to open their business soon, and my comment will- Okay, I would love for them to open their business soon, and my comment will be, let's keep it as a public hearing right now, obviously, with, I don't have a problem allowing them to speak next time, and, but I also would like to go next time, so they are, you know, they, this has been in our agendas for a little while and stuff, and I mean, not the same request, but all I'm saying is that.
It, it took us a while to get the, the verbiage right on the ordinances to, to change them, but it's really, okay, so we're gonna just continue on, is there anyone else here to address this matter? Any questions from council? Very much, thank you. I will close public hearings. Under consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes, the monthly bill list, schedule a public hearing for October the twenty-fifth for vacation of point oh-two acres of right-of-way associated with the former Patrick's Way Northwest location. Reschedule a public hearing for Sep-, from September twenty-seventh to November fifteenth. Additional use requests for Cole Bush Properties, uh, property owner Donnie and Donnie Tigner is L C for contractor's equipment storage on, uh, Simmons Road, intersection of Simmons Road and Alma Street, uh, located two oh-nine five and two oh-nine one, where it's stationed. And we also have the approval of the resolution for Fire Prevention Week.
Make the motion be approved with consent agenda.
Second. Motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Madam Clerk, fire it pin up.
Councilwoman Bishop. Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Watson.
Aye.
That's six oh, thank you. We have no introductions and presentations tonight, Mr. Wingfield, is that correct?
Correct.
Citizens' comments, this is the, the time that we allow, uh, citizens' chance to come forward and speak about issues within the town. Uh, procedure would be, you have three minutes. If you would like to speak, you come to the podium, uh, name and address, and address your comments to the chair. Anyone here?
I don't know that I really have a comment, but I was told that you would like to hear about, um, the Christiansburg High School P T S A upcoming parade.
Your, your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Stephanie Roberts, and I live at two oh-two West Staria, here in the town of Christiansburg, and I'm the vice president of the Christiansburg High School P T S A.
Okay.
Um, we have submitted a special events permit, and we would like to host our annual parade, uh, to benefit the high school students and their families. We are requesting that the parade be held on Wednesday, October twelfth. The parade will take place on Main Street and the surrounding areas. We are asking for the time to set up from four-thirty to seven, with the actual event from seven to eight P M. And we are anticipating approximately two thousand, uh, community members in attendance, and very little, um, uh, to be asked, uh, just the police to assist with parking and, um, traffic, uh, moving the traffic, but also to use the signs and, um, the street for the parade. That's all we're asking for.
Very good, thank you.
If anybody-
I think that was addressed in the Recreation Commission meeting this morning, in the Rec-, not Commission, but Special Events Committee this morning.
So, the agenda for vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to address council? Hearing none, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Lindsay Radcliffe, um, I live at eighteen fifty-one Cub Circle Northwest, and, uh, my husband Tanner and I, um, are owners of Space Rabbit Coffee, um, currently the coffee trailer, but we are opening a drive-through location at twenty-one oh-five Roanoke Street. Um, we are really excited to have business here in Christiansburg and, um, hope that we will do well, but I also wanted to, um, kind of just ask if you all had any plans to extend the facade grant offerings to maybe that portion of Roanoke Street, or if that was something that you all would consider?
I, I, I don't think it's at this, during this cycle.
In future rounds.
So we, we're really glad you're here tonight, thank you, and thank you for opening your business in Christiansburg, we welcome you.
Thank you.
I hope you're successful. This year, we're just going through the process of finishing up the downtown one, but yes, we are planning on expanding that to other places, I think yours is on Roanoke Street, isn't it?
Yes.
But I don't know what the ours committee is doing too, because I know you have done murals and things like that, I don't know if you're planning to do more, but
Um, we have a-
Maybe that's something that, do you guys, are you guys still doing those?
Um, I'm not sure it's related to her question, but I, I think the bottom line is, we're looking to expand to other commercial districts, Radford Street, Roanoke Street, et cetera, in subsequent rounds for the facade grant. This current cycle is focused just on downtown and Kim.
Okay, thank you.
This cycle is this fiscal year?
Correct.
So, be prepared for next fiscal year.
Okay.
Which is July first.
Thank you very much.
But I think you had asked about murals, for help, for the murals.
Yes, we, we do have one mural that was, um, completed on the side of our building, um, and then we also have work that we are hoping to be able to do to kind of spruce up the, um, the front facing.
Where's twenty-one oh-five Roanoke?
Um, it's across from Hunan House, it's the only thing that anybody ever recognizes when I tell them where it's at. It used to be Lone Max.
It was a bank, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I drove by.
Yeah.
I'm excited for you.
I'm sorry, it's, it's down at, uh, Sky, where Skyline Bank was, is it that far down?
Central building it was down.
I'm not-
I'm turning my age now.
Yeah. I don't think.
The O B W place?
Yeah.
It's that bank where it was right next to it.
Okay, the small one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You can't miss it, right?
You can't now.
Is that the old building?
Yes.
Okay, I bet you covered it. Across from, uh, uh, Gates Flowers and Gifts used to be, okay.
Sure, I grew up in Pulaski, so I'm still learning my way.
Whatever, just believe anything the mayor tells you, honey, and you're in good shape.
That sounds good.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
I just wanna say, I, I know my family's excited when you guys would come, uh, to, uh, I guess, any of the events the town has and, uh, and, um, the farmer's market. My kids love going there, that's the only reason, man, they drag us there, but it was worth it, it was worth it to get there. So, I'm excited for you.
Thank you for coming.
Well, and I really told you this, but yeah, I love the coffee, and then my kids do like the milk chocolate, so it's awesome.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to address council? And I will close the citizens' comments. We'll go to committee reports, Mr. Bishop and Ms. Hackett, street committee reports and recommendations.
All right, I'm out for you tonight. All right, so, um, the first plot we have to show you, uh, is a boundary line adjustment, a sidewalk easement dedication, and a public utility easement dedication for Kyle Manor Townhomes. That's at the corner of College Street and Buffalo Drive, um, so it's in this yellow square that you see.
Okay, I thought that probably looked familiar. We just want to do that thing, the, the back porch, but, okay.
That's right there, yeah, so, other side of the street from the presentation earlier, um, so they would like to, uh, so, yep, that's a street view of the area, so you see there's a townhome development, and then there's this green space, and then Andrea Field Jones down to the aerial view. Um, so right now, uh, you'll see here, this red pink line is where the plat currently exists. What they're asking is to adjust that line to this black dotted line that you see here, so that it will follow the, the development that's currently existing, and then section off this other area so that they can build, um, or, or do whatever that they'd like to do on that new, newly, um, developed plat.
Okay.
They'll also build a sidewalk here at the edge of the property, that's what the sidewalk easement dedication will be for, and there will also be a public utility easement dedication, since this, um, area will be subdivided for additional development.
Okay.
And I would like to present this in the form of a motion.
A second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Isn't this close to the middle school?
Yeah, that's right there.
Yeah, that's the same.
It's my question, yeah.
It's a townhouse, as right as you turn to go into the middle school, they're on the way.
So, what about the stormwater?
That's what I was gonna ask, are they gonna have to improve it for the existing around there?
To, to subdivide, you wouldn't necessarily have to, but if you develop, you, you would have to basically meet, uh, state, state.
Well, that's their goal, is to develop a lot, right?
Yeah, that's what they said.
They have a corresponding site plan that has five townhomes on it, which does have stormwater.
But that's-
It is beating our town.
But that's not the issue tonight, this is just to adjust the property line.
Just the boundary line, the sidewalk easement and public utility easement, that's it.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, any other questions?
So, you said that there, there is, which lane are they, there is, clearly, is that rectangle, right?
Yes. So, this is the current line, the boundary line currently sits, and so you can see the property here, sort of in this area, it's across the line into this area, and they're asking to change that property line boundary and adjust it to follow the flow of the existing development.
But that's all their land, that's not townland, right?
Correct.
They get, they own all of, all of this.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Watson.
Aye.
That was six oh, thank you. Uh, next is plat showing subdivision, boundary line adjustments, public-private easement dedications, tax map four thirty-six A dash eleven, four thirty-six A dash eighteen, to the twenty-one hundred block of North Franklin Street, three lots.
That's right, so, um, this is the section right behind Aldi, or beside Aldi, I guess I should say. Um, and right now, this is one giant plat, uh, but Andrea, will you pull up the aerial or the, or the the map showing the adjustment? And so this is another view, this is that whole area, what they're asking to do is, um, is subdivide this with these, uh, lines that you see here. They'll also do a boundary line adjustment here at the bottom, so there's another, um, plat here at the bottom of this, and they wanna move the line about two feet, so that is a nice straight consistent line. And then there will also be a public-private easement dedicated for access to the property. And I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions?
I take it Bojangles is going there?
That's right, so Bojangles, okay, correct.
Since that's the name of the file.
Bojangles, and then I believe
The car wash.
Car wash at the bottom, and a tire center. Here at the middle, am I right? Did I get that right?
Discount tire.
Discount tire, discount, okay, discount tire, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? We have a proper motion and a second, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Watson.
Aye.
That would be six oh. Plat showing right-of-way dedication of Corporate Drive Southeast, a temporary construction easement and a permanent drainage easement on tax map number five fifty-nine dash one dash one B at two ninety-five Technology Drive Southeast, that's backcountry dot com parcel.
So, um, so this is that country, and you'll see this road here is Corporate Drive, and, um, so they would like to, uh, Andrea, will you flip to the So firstly, they would like to, um, have a right-of-way dedicated, and it's this tiny, like, my dot is covering the whole thing. They would like to dedicate this little area so that, uh, while the road is wide enough to become a properly paved town road up to standards, there is a corner right here that they would like to dedicate so that we can, um, turn in and out of that lane appropriately to council members as well. Uh, this also shows a temporary construction easement that would follow Corporate Drive, because they're planning to develop this road and, uh, add a cul-de-sac at the end, and there would also be a permanent drainage easement. And that's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Who was that one on again?
So, this is the industrial park, so this is Dish, the old Dish Network, current Moog, and this is, um, Back Country. So, it's on the other side of the, of eighty-one, in, in the industrial park.
And who is making that request again, who is?
Well, it's on Back Country.
From Back Country, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm good, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Watson.
Aye.
That's six oh. Next, uh, we have Mrs. Hicks and Mr. Jenkins, Central Business Committee report on the facade grant selection process update.
So, uh, front of you guys have a scorecard, which is, um, the first of its kind for the facade grant. Um, we're near number three, right?
No, full third round.
Third round, yep. Um, and this is the first year that we have, uh, we're sort of getting deeper into our adjudication by having a scorecard, uh, so that committee members, the facade grant committee, those folks and ourselves, Joanna, myself, can, can evaluate this, and if anyone has any questions, it's very easy to track back, um, and look at this as a scorecard, uh, much like you would with an R F P coming through. Um, and, uh, there's also a, a comment section that we're thinking of providing as well, but uh, this came out of a discussion just last week that we had with the committee, uh, and wanted to bring this before council, as we're getting ready to, to take off on the, the ten remaining applications that we have in this current cycle.
And just so you guys know that this is only for this year, obviously, it will be tweaked and will make some changes as, you know, for the next years, if that was the, you know, uh, decision by council or whoever was part of the central business. But I think it really gives a little bit of a sense of transparency, and also where we, you know, um, a little bit of accountability, and just making sure that, you know, when people can, you know, wanting to do some research about these grants, that they can look at and see that there was a process, and see why we made the decisions and why these businesses were chosen above other ones. It's really hard to come up even with this scorecard, personally, because you just so want every business in the town to be able to get this, you know, and so uh, like you were mentioning a minute ago, you know, it's so important to have, um, these opportunities for other locations in the town that this opens a bigger discussion too, that we probably wanna bring to council next time, or maybe another time, regarding, um, maybe smaller facade grants, or maybe it's something like a painting, or just for, for paying money for supplies and things like that, for, for businesses to restore or fix their places, so.
But we know we need to get moving on the current, uh, cycle, uh, of those ten applicants, and this provides a foundation for that. Uh, this was, uh, also by group consensus and deliberation, uh, by, by those appointed members that we all discussed last week, so looking for a head nod here and, and move forward with that as we go.
And it hasn't just been one meeting, it's been several meetings.
Right.
Very good.
You know, to go to this.
Who actually is going to do the scoring?
All of us, all the committee.
The committee members, including Joanna and myself.
Each one submit a scorecard, like a, in a bag, Washington?
Right.
Exactly.
Very good. Anything else?
Uh, just a quick question, is this up for discussion, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, are these questions that are definitely asked and answered from the applications? Or if they aren't, how would you get some of the information?
Yeah, we're gonna review each of the applications, and we're gonna have two weeks to review them, and then we're gonna, uh, have a scorecard that each of us is going to obviously, uh, put a score to it, and then we'll come back and meet together at a later time.
Okay.
Is that what your question was?
So, like, one of the questions is, are there historical elements of the- So, so like, one of the questions is, are there historical elements of the building that are gonna be improved by the grant? So how would you know? Is that something that's guaranteed? If that's something that's gonna be improved, is that on the application, or would you have to reach back out to find that information?
That information is kind of all open in the application, and then the applications have a lot of questions that, you know, that were kind of gonna answer this for us, but I think, I think by looking at the application, some of them even submitted pictures and stuff, but this is just the first step. Tada, they're not gonna get the money just because we got this scorecard completed and they got the grant. There is a still process for them, they have to submit the receipts, they have to do what they said that we're gonna do. And then there is also gonna be an artist person that's going to be making a drawing of their building, and hopefully they will follow what's, you know, what's recommended by the, by the artist.
I think they're all really good questions to ask, I guess, I was just wondering if these were questions that were important to the committee, but like as someone applying for it, would I know, you know, would I think it was obvious I was, I was improving a historical element? Or would that be something that was in my application if it wasn't, I mean, would that ding me, but it's actually, so if you're saying, you know, you're getting some points if there's a historical element that's gonna be improved, but I'm applying for it and I don't realize that that's part of the the scoring process, I meant nothing to mention it. So I guess I was just wondering if that kind of information's automatically in the applications. So when you're asking these questions, you have everything inside the application to answer each of the questions?
I think a lot of it, just the part that we put an age restriction to it, you know, it had to be fifty years or older. I think right there, it just tells a history of that. And then, I think the other elements as far as like, what are you trying to do with the building? I, my personal senses, and maybe it's different for Casey, but if you're requesting money to fix something, it's because you wanna make it attractive, and that's why there is a process to go through the artist to make it. I mean, there is a really in the process of the application that you have to go through the artists to get up to the forty-five hundred dollars.
I think, I think the short answer to your question is not all of these criterios were established in the initial application this round.
Yeah, that's true.
The applicants did not see every one of these, these line items going through, and quite frankly, they probably should've. But, you know, part of it is just timing of when it, when it came together in terms of development, so the next best thing to facilitate the current round of ten is, is for the committee to come to consensus on that adjudication. So as we go forward, this, this is sort of, this is gonna be our roadmap, if you will, that we can use as a foundation for the current round and go forward, and there will be some back and forth dialogue, as there have been in years past, in the first two rounds, with those prospective applicants as we go through, so it's a little bit of a trial and error.
It's a work in progress, yeah, but as, as long as we have this in place at first, I think, that is maybe gonna be the, the point for this, doing this, is even to make it easier for other members of council or for anybody in the committees to make those decisions.
Right.
And, yeah, it should be done before, you know, the applications, but that's the hope.
We tweak, I mean, every year, there's, there's things to tweak, you know.
And there's gonna be less buildings that hopefully will require the, you know, the fixing, so.
But you're able to go back and talk to them, so if somebody did, I mean, because we didn't have this, of course, before when they put their applications in.
Right.
So it's not like somebody can't look at this and go, I didn't mention I was doing that, but I am, maybe I should reach out and let the committee know so that they're not losing points for something they just didn't realize they needed to mention in a specific way for asking that question. But it sounds like you're gonna keep that communication open.
And Andrew, that, you know, to a large extent, Andrew, that, that process sort of was how it was handled in the first two rounds as well, a little bit of that back and forth with the applicants.
Right, as looks committee that, the questions would come up and say, okay, staff, we'd like you to follow up the applicants.
But it, most importantly, actually, I think it gives, it gives staff such as Benjamin and Andrew a roadmap for how to respond to applicants, since they are gonna field those questions if they get them at all. And being those point person, point people, this gives them that, those parameters, basically.
Mr. Bishop.
All right, I noticed on here you say each committee member is gonna give them a score, apparently twenties to math. So if I was gonna give somebody a score of six, what is that based on?
It's gonna be based partly in their, in their subjective, their discretion as well, I mean, you know, when you say architectural merit, right? That's gonna be somewhat subjective, and that's why there's a comment section to it as well.
I don't even know why it didn't get into here, the comment section, because it was part of it and to be included in it.
Yeah.
So just remember that, Andrew, to add it under this scorecard. You got it?
Yeah.
Same way, I'm sort of, I'm picking back on you, are you saying like, you give somebody a score of fifteen to twenty, that's an ideal candidate for it, and then ten to fifteen, hmm, hmm, and then you start below, like a candidate that's not really quality, ten and below? Is that what you're saying? So I see you got like twenty points.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't match.
Right, is it gonna be a matrix for your scoring?
I mean, I think it's a lot like you would do, how staff would do an RFP, right? They come together as a group, and you're gonna have, everyone's gonna come together with a different number, and then it's aggregated. So it's, right, and you discuss that as a whole, and this, this facade grant is, is not gonna be much different than that process.
I don't even expect that this is going to be perfect on the day that we all meet, but the hope is that we'll get together on that one meeting once everybody has filled out the scorecards for each of the applications and and come together with the decision, why do you give it so many, you know, so little points, is there a reason? And then I think, I don't know if there was anything that can make you change your, I mean, you can probably change your scores even during the, during that meeting, I'm sure, so.
Well, that, that is why we're having them look at them individually before we meet together, so people are not.
And they will write notes and things like that, so.
And can you remind us all here who's on that committee?
The committee appointments, Andrew.
Liz Dickerson, it's Jason.
Jason, Jason Puff, Rita Irwin.
Rita Irwin.
Liz Dickerson?
Right, and then Lauren Truss.
Lauren Truss, Casey Jenkins, and me.
And the events committee? Whoever's on the event, or, sorry, the central business committee.
Yeah, the facade committee.
Correct, yeah.
Are vacant properties eligible?
What?
Vacant properties are eligible?
If you have a plan of action as far as, as a business coming in. But not if you are gonna keep it empty.
Well, it says that buildings must be fifty years old.
One of the questions just was, is it flighted or vacant property?
Her question was, if it was gonna be vacant. The, the purpose of this is helping businesses, so I'm sure that if the plan was that they came to council and they said, or they went through the plan, planning, or you know, and they were asking for a business license that they should qualify, even if they're not open yet, but with the hope that it will be open within that year, because that was one of the simulations, wasn't it? That it had to be open within, or worked on within that year.
Right.
I, I would think that you would have, that you would certainly give precedent to established businesses that have set the precedent for, you know, they've been there and they wanna improve the property, not someone that wants to improve the property and hope they can open a business and it might go.
Right.
But your goal really is more toward existing businesses, is I correct?
Right.
Okay. This question, would they just get, it just, since one of the questions is, is this a flighted or vacant property? Whose conditions are impacting surrounding properties, that just kinda seems like maybe they get some points for that, and if I say, well, no, this business isn't vacant, then maybe I give them less points for that.
You wanna come and help us, okay?
I am.
It is coming.
You're welcome. I'm gonna be looking at the stakes for two weeks, you wanna help? No, please, please do, by any means, I mean, I know, you know what I mean, I, as a matter of fact, I'm not a person that likes to give numbers to people. I always feel like there is a thing, but yeah, you're definitely welcome.
Miss Truell.
Go for coffee and we'll get together and look at that.
Miss Truell, first question.
So for instance, once this process, this year's process is done, where, where does it go from there?
So once we pick and choose those five, or if there is less, how was it that we were gonna do it? I think it was up to forty-five hundred, but obviously we can do it.
Let's say that's done.
You're, you're saying, well.
Now, what's the next process?
Yeah, next fiscal year, we, the committee starts earlier and gets together and asks for a budget upfront, right? An itemized budget of what they're gonna do.
Right, but I guess you misunderstood me. Where does it go after you guys decide?
I think the.
Comes back for the year.
I guess what I'm saying, it comes to council.
Yeah, it comes back to council.
And, and the merchant or the grant winner has to then go through the process with the planning and paint selections and recommendations.
Yeah, we have a process.
Is that right, Ben, is that kinda what you did in Salem?
Well, that's what we have done, yeah.
Yeah, what we did up here too, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's correct, they will go through all of that process, they'll meet with the artist and further the applications and what, so, yeah.
And then it's a working together because, you know, it's very well explained that this is not free money, this is not just, this is an incentive, but it's also to be responsible with it. And at any point in time, we can actually, you know, just, just not pay for it, as if they don't follow what they said that we're gonna do, and I mean, Benjamin and Andrew have a tough job on this one, but.
Yeah, that's correct, they have to do what they have said they're going to do, what the town has agreed to, and it's all in reimbursement, so there, there's several points of control for you.
Right, there's a contract.
Right.
And it's just the work that's gonna, from the day that the grant is given out, or whatever, they get a letter saying that they got it, they have a year to complete it, there is no extensions, there is no, you know.
And you guys are looking.
And they have to start working from that day on.
You guys are looking when you update it to incorporate Roanoke Street, Rafford Street, like you mentioned. You guys are gonna take out that fifty-year-old building rule.
Well, I think we'll look at and review what that will look like, but your opinions and comments are bottom on that.
I just don't know how many buildings on Roanoke or Rafford Road are over fifty years.
I tell you why, you can take that one and start working on it for next time, because we need help.
All right, thank you.
Make, can I make one comment?
So are we?
Yeah, Tanya, I think you said something else.
One more, just one more, just a, just a thought, just to consider, all of these questions help me sort of determine what you think the, or what the committee thinks the definition of like the impact category is, for example. And so just a consideration is, can we define what impact is and what that criteria is as a, as writing what the full measure of a, of a, of a max score is, you know, so to get twenty points, this application may just makes a large impact, makes the town more beautiful, encourages town or other buildings to improve, et cetera. So you write the full description of what does a twenty look like, and then perhaps measure by asking some of these questions and looking at those details and going, did this application fully meet that criteria or that definition versus yes or no questions? Just a consideration, I think we have the structure for it, if you wanted to twist it and write what is a perfect application, it looked like, I think we have the bones for it.
I think.
And then too, there is a mission statement that goes along with the facade grant.
Well, I, I mean, there are a lot, there are a lot of suggestions being placed and descriptions here. Is it gonna take another six months to get that written so that we are six months down the road before we ever get into the grant writing? Or are you going to leave it up to the judgment of the full board members plus that are voting on? I mean, they're saying, Tony said, you know, a description of what's a twenty look like, well, then you gotta, what does a ten look like, what's a five look like? And, and so, you know, you gotta go through all of that and agree, and then come back and change, which is going to, could delay six months, so.
And, and we're, and we're already behind, I mean, to be quite frank, and I, I would prefer the latter, mayor, just, just because, I mean, the, the staff wanted some, some more backing and, you know, when they get responses and questions, but, but, you know, this is the third round, not the first. So there's, there's a lot that is already well-known and put in place in terms of structure that Andrew has worked on before, and I have the full confidence that it's gonna roll, you know, just fine, so.
But I do think that you guys, you know, we have tried to keep inform of what we're doing. So the mission statement was one of the first works that we put in place, trying to make sure that people understood what we're doing. And, you know, the next step was definitely this scorecard, and then obviously there is a lot to tweak later on, and and I'm more than sure, once we finish with this scorecard, there will be a lot of comments, everybody will, you know. And so we'll probably learn from those mistakes too.
I would say that with the scorecard, I don't know how many applications you have, but that scorecard in itself will be a process of elimination to where the, the, you know, the lower on the line will get cut and the higher, so that's kind of what we look at. Trust us.
I love the scorecard, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I think you guys did a good job.
Yeah, but if you, my, sorry, if you write like the measure of success, you don't have to write, you don't have to detail every single number, you just say, does it fully meet it, does it partially meet it, does it not meet it at all, and that gives people a scale that.
That must be in the mind of the scorer, I would think, I mean, it left up to them. Okay, anything else? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Very lively discussions.
So for other committees, you would ask?
No, no, we, I haven't, yeah, we'll take other committee reports, what you got?
Agency and agents and, and services to the, you know, to the older. I gotta tell you, those meetings are long, they're very informative, and they're wonderful. If you know of anybody that needs services and is older than sixty years of age, please reach out. We, you know, this, this group of people are there to help, they provide transportation, they provide meals, they provide, I mean, they provide so many services, they provide, you know, all this counseling, legal advice. They, they just provide so much that a lot of it, it's like I volunteered with them even providing making those little baskets and packages that they give out several times a month to this older, well, to, to people. But I tell you what, if you don't use it, they get lost. And a lot of this, this food is actually donated by, by companies that are getting rid of, like, perfect vegetables. I mean, literally boxes and boxes of vegetables that anybody can consume, you know, but they will get wasted if people don't use it, and unfortunately, one of the problems that they have had is older people, one of the older generations, they don't wanna ask for those services because they feel like somebody else can use it. But guess what? Those are services that are there for them, so if you know of anybody that's sixty-plus, not just in Christiansburg, because this is our organization that is run through Pilaski County, Pilaski Town, Rafford City, Montgomery County, Christiansburg, the town of Blacksburg, Floyd, who else did I miss? I mean, everybody around here can use those services, and a lot of them, you know, everything is free. The meals, there is frozen meals if they're, if you're not able to, you know, have the wheels, the, whatever, that's called the help meals thing or whatever, but definitely reach out to people, and if you need information, I'll definitely can get that information for you to apply.
Okay, so Ms. Hicks, how about at the next meeting, how about you provide us with the contact and the services that they do, something in writing that each one of us can have and we can take with us?
That would be awesome.
All right, thank you, I've got you on the agenda. Discussion by, in action by mayor and council, request of street closure Christopher High School homecoming parade.
Without reading it all, mayor, can I make a motion?
Yeah, please do. I'm gonna have a thing going somewhere down Camryer Street for a total.
You make a motion that will approve the request for the homecoming parade.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Madam clerk?
Councilman Bishop. Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hackett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Shawatt.
Aye.
Councilman Walton.
Aye.
That's six O, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Personal, yes, thank you, we look forward to it. Personal property tax discount rate based on the Personal Property Tax Relief Act nineteen ninety-eight. Mr. Winfield, I'll say about yours.
Yes, this states back to the Gilmore administration, his first year in office, one of his campaign promises was basically a personal property tax relief, essentially vehicle tax relief through the state, and so the state gives us a check every year in the amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. And it is intended for us to basically give a rebate to. And it is intended for us to basically give a rebate to, uh, property, property owners' vehicle property taxes. And, uh, vehicles under a thousand dollars get a full rebate. Uh, the other vehicles between a thousand and twenty thousand dollars get a rebate, uh, basically based on a percentage of value according to the, the amount of money that we get from the state deducted, after you deduct the thousand-dollar or less vehicles. Uh, that vehi, that rate, uh, we're suggesting to suggest, set that at twenty-five-point-five-two percent. Uh, we've been doing this every year since ninety-eight, I guess, and it, that rate goes down every year because of increase in number of vehicles, essentially.
So how, how does a person know if he gets that rebate?
Um, if they want a check with Nell's office, just to make sure they're getting it, but, you know, yes.
Very good.
How is that collected, Randy? That's collected through the.
The state sends us a check.
I, I know, but.
But we did, that, the tax, car tax off our personal property tax, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that, that, yes, it is.
The normal billing process.
So we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, personal, that we approve the personal property tax discount rate based on the per, Personal Property Tax Relief Act nineteen ninety-eight presented by Mr. Wingfield.
I would second.
A motion to the second, any further discussions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Sixo, thank you. Staff reports, Mr. Wingfield.
Fire prevention parade.
Did I miss something? Oh, see, yeah, that's the, uh, whatever the thing I had added on.
Yeah, the fire parade.
Uh, the fire parade, yes. Thank you, Sam. Uh, do we have a motion to approve, and do we have a second? Madam Clerk? Let's talk over the fourth, is it not?
Yes.
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Showalter.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Sixo, thank you. Staff reports, town manager.
You'd asked for an update on the Cambria Trail, we could, or maybe bring up a drawing. We have been approved by VDOT for a revenue sharing project for the Cambria Trail. Our revenue sharing is basically a fifty-fifty match. Um, you, you can see drawing of the trail there. Uh, you might even bring it up to town, it might be better. Um, basically the project, right now, we currently have ninety thousand dollars in the current fiscal year for survey work. We're looking to budget next year's, uh, fiscal year budget for the construct, uh, right-of-way acquisition and construction. The total project cost is three-point-two million, so like I say, it's a fifty-fifty match. So we're looking for one-point-six mil, million in next year's budget. Um, basically, we've got, uh, detail there of three different trail sections. The first section, I guess, uh, section A would be a, a ten-foot paved trail from A to B. From B to C would be a ten-foot, uh, multi-use trail, basically joining the street right-of-way. And from C to, uh, Cambria Street there would be a eight-foot sidewalk. And, uh, that, that's basically the, the details up above of what the sections would look like. The, the, the dollar amount is three-point-two million for the total.
Now, can you just kind of tell me exactly where that is? Because I have to figure out.
Okay, the, the, where the cursor is, is the aquatic center, and, and then basically right in front of it's Mill Rain. Uh, if you look over to the left, you see North Franklin Street and that, uh, parking area that we put in recently for the, uh, aquatic center.
Got it. Oh, nice. That's really cool.
So this is what we're looking to budget at least portion, a portion for the right-of-ways next year?
Well, well, right-of-way and construction, we're, we're looking at one-point-six million next year.
Do we have a phase?
We do anticipate the, the full project taking about two years, though.
This project?
Yes.
So what, what's the next phase to it? I'm just curious.
W, well, we do have, like I say, ninety thousand that we plan on having survey work this spring.
For this?
In, in the current budget, yes.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you, Randy.
For that to go all the way around and connect to the other side of the aquatic center, right?
Yeah, yeah, it currently, basically it crosses the street there at the aquatic center right now.
And this is the depot for the question.
All right.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Sure. Update on the downtown, uh, park bathrooms. I got a, I guess, current estimate from Public Works of approximately sixty-five thousand dollars for the installation of the bathrooms. We'd have to do that as a, a stick built, just because of the hill, we wouldn't be able to get a crane in to get a prefabricated building.
Can include sewer work, the water lines and everything?
I, I believe it would.
How come it, it came out to be cheaper than the last estimate?
Well, that, that, that was, I might want to check with Jim, make sure it doesn't include sewer work. Uh, uh, to be honest, I kinda doubt it does for that amount either.
That's really good, though.
I, I, I do think it's a pretty good number. He did get, he did, he did get two estimates from contractors.
I'm sure Jim won't allow that to happen.
Let's keep working on it, it's not in this year's budget, and I, I'm sure we'd like to see some sort of proposal for next year's.
It'll be done with capital improvement through the Recreation Department request next year, is that correct?
Correct.
All right.
You say, we could always do an amendment to the budget.
Okay, uh.
VML, uh, of course, VML is this weekend. Uh, I know several of you are going, if you'd want to ride with Andrew and I, we're gonna leave Sunday morning around nine-thirty. Uh, the program begins at two o'clock on Sunday, and of course, it runs through Tuesday. We'll, we'll be coming out, back after it's over.
I think we have posted, posted public notice announcing that some of us, more than, more than two members of the council will be together.
Potential quorum.
So, we've posted all those notices as we need to.
Okay, and just a few events to let you know about. Of course, we've got the food truck rodeo proposed this weekend, hoping the weather holds out Saturday from four to nine. Uh, October fourth, Tu, that would be this next coming Tuesday, this fire prevention parade at seven o'clock. Uh, October eighth, that's the following Saturday, would be another Rockin' Main event from five to nine. And October twelfth, that's a Wednesday, would be the homecoming parade at seven PM.
Busy.
Randy, I have a question for you about the VML event. Why you said, uh, I mean, it's Casey, it's me, it's Michael Barber, who else is going, Tanya, right? It's four of us, you're going, and then Randy's, uh, Andrew's going. Is there a reason why both of you have to go? Just out of curiosity.
Well, we often attend different sessions, uh, they, they do have breakout sessions and it's, you can't go to more than one at one time.
The manager and assistant to attend, I think, I encourage.
I normally have seen, just like, I mean, I've seen one or two managers there in the past, but we're gonna be so many of us that maybe there is a chance we can all, you know, split those sessions.
Well, the, the roster is set, Mr. Wingfield and Mr. Warren are going.
I'll, I'll put your mind at ease. Uh, Tim and Sam will be here, so if something happens, we'll take care of business.
Exactly.
I will as well, but call me after you call in.
Most important one, Mark, Mark Sisler will be here, and as the vice mayor, you're actually third in line, so.
I know, I'm kidding, I was only kidding.
All right, very good. Anything else?
But, you know, I told you, I thought the county had voted on merchant capital tax at the last meeting. They actually voted to set the public hearing is what they had voted on. They set that for October tenth. And also, I'll just mention, the county is having a transportation plan, public meeting this Thursday from six-thirty to, from three-thirty until six-thirty at the county government center.
Can you please share the emails that we got from that lady regarding all the petitions that she got and everything else? Maybe you can talk to her and see if she can go to that meeting, because obviously, this, this, this can be great information for them.
Which, which lady is?
What was her name? The lady that came and spoke about the bus and then sent us emails with petitions regarding bus transportation and they need services in the county and the town. Maybe the county will.
I think I, Randy, check if I, I think I've got those saved on the computer.
I've, I've got her contacted, but.
Very good, we'll get them. What else now?
That's it.
Okay. Reed, you got anything? Any other staff members? Counsel reports, Mr. Showalter.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Bishop.
Nothing to report.
Ms. Hicks.
I wanted to say, besides the, all the events that you were talking about, which are great, Saturday and everything, we're gonna be definitely busy around town. There is also three court, uh, court treats at the skate, uh, park. There's gonna be a skate contest on Saturday, ten-twenty-second. Um, so definitely get information about that, it seems like a great event. And then I was also, well, I was at the aquatic center. I know my children have enjoyed the theme's youth swim team that the aquatic center provides. It's only forty-five dollars for residents, it's fifty-five dollars for non-residents a month, um, you know, for classes and stuff. So I think, you know, it's great information for parents and send their kids out swimming and learn some great things over there, so.
Very good.
It's a great program.
Ms. Ms. Hockett. Mr. Wilson.
No, sir.
Mr. Jenkins.
Uh, central business, uh, is tomorrow, uh, at noon here at town hall. And, um, also Arts Advisory Committee, uh, if you haven't seen Morgan down in Cambria, working away on the, uh, electrical supply building there, the, the facade. She's doing a great job, so if you get a chance to swing down and just say hello to her and check out her, her progress, uh, she's really coming along well, so take a peek.
Yeah, yeah, don't you have anything going on at the museum?
Yeah, yeah, one or two. One or two things, but you can check their website.
Thank you. Sam? No, I've already got you. I will, uh, I'd like to compliment the, the department's, uh, Recreation Police Department Rescue Squad. Uh, Public Works, particularly for the work you did on the nine-twenty-four Rockin' Main Street. Had a crowd estimated around four hundred, which was a really good turnout for it. Randy has already reminded you that, uh, the, the next one is, uh, I'll cover, is, I'll cover the eighth. And I will remind council that on September the fifteenth, I sent an email with an evaluation form for the town manager. They're due back the seventh. I've gotten one back so far, so, if you need me to send it back, let me know, but, uh, that email went out for me. Anything else to come before council?